Okay, we're gonna call our city council meeting in order. Today is Monday, May 13th, 2024. We'll have an invocation and then the pledge of allegiance. The invocation will be by Dr. Eric, I think this says, Honkens?
Hankins.
Hankins, okay, very good. Sorry about that, sir, I can't, yep. Yeah, alright. It's alright. Yep. In the New Testament, 2 Timothy, Chapter 2, verses 1 through 3, says this, "As a first priority, I insist that in trees and prayers and petitions and thanksgivings be made on behalf of everyone, for rulers and all who are in authority, so that we all may live peacefully and calmly in reverence and dignity. This is good and acceptable in the sight of God, our Savior. Let us pray. O God only wise, we confess that in uncertain times such as these, we're often at a loss as to what we should pray. And so your word therefore is a source of light in the darkness. So as the apostle has instructed, I offer my request to you for others with thanksgiving. I pray first of all for everyone gathered here, that you might flood each person with the calm wisdom that makes life together possible. I pray especially for those who've answered the call to lead, because of the special role they play in casting a vision for our community that ennobles everyone. I thank you for the way in which you have provided for our city in generations past, so that we have a rich heritage to hand on. And I thank you in advance for the way you will guide us in stewarding that heritage well for those who come behind us. I humbly pray all these things in Jesus' name. Amen."
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic over which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, thank you guys. Alright. Counsel, if I can get someone to approve the minutes from our April 22nd meeting, 2024.
Make a motion.
Amend the agenda first. Oh, do we not do that? Oh, yes. So we are amending the agenda. We will amend the agenda, we will remove Agenda Item Number 9. Alright, alright, very good. And...
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes. That's submitted.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Alright, we have a report from our mayor. She has a lot.
Good evening, counsel. I have quite a bit underneath my report tonight. It's really not gonna be a report on what's going on with the city, but some recognition. First, I want to recognize the fact that during the week, we did proclaim it Mental Health Month here in the City of Fairhope. And again, we know how mental illness affects so many people in our community and mental health. And so we did a proclamation to recognize the fact that mental illness affects almost every family in America, and that, you know, we want to make, to bring that awareness to the people here in Fairhope. So I did do that. Also, we have a proclamation tonight for, I'm gonna flip through my files here and find it, for tennis. Do I have any representatives from tennis here with me?
See, Tamaz?
Yes, yes.
So we know how popular tennis has gotten, and just want tonight to declare National Tennis Month here in Fairhope. Tamaz, where are you? There you go. So Tamaz is here, everybody knows that Tamaz is our tennis professional that's out at the Mike Ford Tennis Center. So so happy to have him, he does a great job. And this is, "Whereas on May 21st, 1881, the USTA, originally known as the United States National Lawn Tennis Association, was founded in New York City to create rules and standard for the emerging game of lawn tennis. Whereas the USTA is a nonprofit national governing body for tennis in the United States, and leads the promotion and growth of the sport at every level of play, from beginners to professionals at the US Open. Whereas the USTA is the largest tennis organization in the world with over 700,000 members from every corner of the country. Whereas the USTA proudly partners with local tennis programs to showcase the important health, social, and educational benefits of tennis, and make the sport available to everyone regardless of age, environment, condition, or ability through its USTA adaptive grants. Whereas by increasing the accessibility of tennis for citizens of Fairhope of all ages and ability, the USTA has contributed to making our community happier and healthier. Whereas USTA has declared the month of May as National Tennis Month to encourage players, organizations, facilities, retailers, tennis manufacturers, and more, to promote local programs and activities at parks and facilities to showcase tennis and spread the word about the sport and its benefits, and to help players and non-players alike find courts and play opportunities in their communities. Now therefore I, Sherry Sullivan, Mayor of Fairhope, do proclaim May 24 as National Tennis Month, and hereby urge the citizens of Fairhope to become aware of and support National Tennis Month." And that means get out and play, right, Tamaz? That's right. Take part in a clinic, or visit the Mike Ford Tennis Center and find out all we have to offer there, and all the wonderful programming that they're doing there. Thank you, Tamaz. Would you like to say anything?
Just thank you and the council members for making this proclamation, and therefore recognizing tennis community, our fun and growing tennis community. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Tamaz.
I'll have a few more pictures to do. So the next thing I'd like to do is call Councilman Burrell down here, because I'd like for him to be part of this also. So we are announcing our AMEA scholarship winners. So we are so excited to be able to do that tonight. Most of you know that AMEA is the Alabama Municipal Electric Association. They've had a scholarship program since 1992. So since 1992, AMEA has awarded over $3.5 million in scholarship monies to graduating high school seniors who receive their electric service from ABA members, which we are a member of. AMEA basically serves as almost like an electric co-op for buying power. We collectively, with 10 other member cities, so there's 11 member cities, pull our power to purchase power at a cheaper rate for our customers, is basically what we do. So we're happy to be able to do this on behalf of AMEA, and also on behalf of Fairhope. But it says to be eligible for an AMEA scholarship, a student, parent, or legal guardian must receive electric service from an AMEA member utility, and the student must attend a four-year college/university/community college or vocational trade school within the state. This year, they received 131 applications received in the 2024 AMEA scholarship program. We award these scholarships along with the other 10 member cities, and Riviera Utilities is also a local member, so they will also be presenting scholarships as well. So tonight, we are happy to present scholarships too. And if you're here, please come up, have a certificate for you, and we'd love to recognize you and take a picture in the lobby once we're finished. I'm gonna give Councilman Burrell these. First, I would like to recognize Jane Whitney Stewart. So she is a senior at Bay Shore Christian. She plans to attend Auburn University and major in nursing. She's a member of the National Honor Society, the Student Government Association, Fellowship of Christian Athletes. She is also a member of the tennis and cross-country teams. Her community service includes Protestant Pantry, Purpose Girls Camp, and the Thomas Hospital Auxiliary Junior Volunteer Program. Congratulations, Jane.
Congratulations, young lady.
Next, we have Gabrielle Marek.
Alright.
So she is a senior at Fairhope High School, and plans to attend Troy University, major in computer science. She is a member of the National Honor Society, Future Business Leaders of America, Mu Alpha Theta, Fellowship of Christian Athletes, the Key Club, Marine Life Club, and Spanish Club. I'm not sure how you have time to do anything. She is also a member of the Eastern Shore Chamber of Commerce Youth Leadership Program, and her community in service includes Ballin County United Way Youth Board, the Ballin County Drug Education Task Force, the Ballin County Humane Society Teen Animal Advocate Program. Congratulations.
Good luck, girl. She's busy.
She might be busier than I am.
She's busy.
The next, we have Anna Bowler Conyers. So we know her as AB around here, but she is a senior at Fairhope High School. She plans to attend Auburn University and studies civil engineering. She is president of the SGA, senior representative of the Key Club, president of the Spanish Club, captain of the Varsity Cross Country Team. She is also a member of the Eastern Shore Optimists Club Dogwood Trail Court, and alumni of the Eastern Shore Chamber of Commerce Youth Leadership Program. Her community service includes the Turkey Trot, Veterans Day Program and Parade, Mobile Boat Walks in All-Timers, the Junior League of Mobile Christmas Jubilee, and the City of Fairhope Lighting of the Trees.
Alright.
Congratulations. And we also have, and she is not, was not gonna be able to be here with us tonight, Hannah Kimbrough. She's also from Fairhope High School. And Hannah is a senior at Fairhope High School. She plans to attend Auburn University and major in pre-med. She is a member of the National Honor Society, Mu Alpha Theta, Family and Career Community Leaders of America, Key Club, and the Future Business Leaders of America. Her community service includes volunteering at the Fairhope Public Library, the Fairhope Arts and Crafts Festival, and the Fairhope Peer Cleanup for Coastal Cleanup. So congratulations to all the scholarship winners.
Alright, the busy girls.
Okay, and y'all hang around, we're gonna do a picture in the lobby in just a minute. I know, I know you do. We don't have enough council members here, so unfortunately, Councilman Burrell, who is also our representative on the AMEA board, has to go back to work.
That's right. I appreciate that, Councilman Burrell.
And I have a couple more. We also have Stephen Strickland here with us from Coastal Alabama Community College. So he is an art teacher at Coastal Alabama, and most of you know, we dedicated the art alley this past week, this past Friday, and the Coastal Alabama art students are the ones that painted the transformer boxes. So we were so happy to have them, you can see them here up on the monitors, but so happy to have them as part of this project. We're gonna continue to add art to this project, I'm sure they're gonna be involved with it. So we have those students here tonight to recognize them with a certificate of recognition. If y'all would like to come up, he's here. Yes. They had graduations, so when I saw them last week, they were saying that. So Savannah is here with us. Savannah, thank you so much for your participation. I'm gonna send these other certificates back with Mr. Strickland. But y'all can see, we have Savannah Huelt, Robin Fernandez, Bree Atkinson, Tegan Brewster, Chip Smith, Talia Lynn, and Robert Barnett. And we so much appreciate y'all putting your time and effort in this beautiful artwork in the alley. Thank y'all so much. Okay, one more, and then I'll be done. So we are also recognizing our junior city council members tonight, who are here in attendance. They are our senior junior city council members. So as y'all know, we have seniors, Jackson Adams. Is Jackson here? There he is, good. I'm gonna let Paige help, Paige has been instrumental in this program. So Jackson, you wanna tell us where you're going to school, what you're gonna do?
Sanford.
Go Bulldogs.
Good job.
Thank you, sir. You're welcome.
So y'all know, the junior city council, we spend a lot of time with them during the year. They visit pretty much every department of the city, kind of learning how government works. It's a great program, we really enjoy having them here with us. We also, this year, added a trip to Montgomery, to show them how the state legislature worked, and got to meet with our local representatives up there. They did a great job showing us around, got to see how things work. So Jackson, thank you for your dedication to the city, thank you for being part of this program, and we wish you the best of luck. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Mary Frances Collins. Josie Lynn.
Yes, I went to the University of Georgia. Go Dogs!
Go Dogs! It's a lot of dogs in the house.
We really appreciate them being here, because they're already done with school, so I know they really don't want to be here tonight. Addison Spears.
I'm going to University of Alabama.
Roll tide, alright.
So if that's not enough, I'm sorry, but that concludes my comments for the evening. And we are going to, I'm gonna go to the lobby for just two minutes, take a few pictures, and I'll be back.
We will continue.
Thank you very much.
We will continue. Okay, guys, we're gonna move out, I'm gonna let them move out, and we'll kinda... Yeah, I'm gonna let them move a little bit, and we'll... Okay, guys, we amended the agenda for those that missed it. We took off the agenda, Agenda Item Number 9. We had a discussion about it in work session, and we decided to amend the agenda. The conversation that we had about the Agenda Item, or the ordinance, or the rescheduling or restructure of our meetings, was put on for a discussion for organizational purposes. Once again, it was never put on in order to stop people from being able to speak their mind, we believe in that. I just wanted to talk about it and bring it up, so that we make sure that we're doing things efficiently and in order, especially when we have a volume of a hot topic. But we are going to amend the agenda, and Number 9 will not be on the agenda tonight. Next on the agenda is public participation, and you have Agenda Items 5 through 24. Agenda Items 5 through 24. You have three minutes, give your name or your address.
I actually would like to speak to two Agenda Items, but it shouldn't take as many as six minutes. My name is Donald Deguts.
Hey, Donald.
My home is 110 Blakeney Avenue, Fairhope. Two Agenda Item 9, that you've since removed, I would like the council to follow the ordinance and have a vote to remove the agenda, so that it becomes a record of the removal, not to vote on the item, but in the ordinance, Section 8, for some reason, in paragraphs F and I, it says that the city council will vote to remove the item from the agenda, so I'd like that to be an item to be recorded. The other issue, again, is we speak of the Historic Preservation Commission, the ordinance to create the commission. Very pleased at the discussions last time about, through the work session, and the revisions made to the ordinance. I've also brought, got myself some education about it, on the questions that I'd asked Chris Williams at the time, where did the money come from? And the answer was state and federal, that's great. From the state, however, it does come from the State of Alabama Education Trust Fund, at least the tax credits. So it should just be noted that that trust fund funds a lot of worthy causes for education, some of which Child Abuse and Neglect Prevention Department, American Legion Scholarships, Department of Public Health, to some extent, public library service, Department of Mental Health. There's a lot of organizations and governmental bodies within the state that vie for that fund. And that's where these tax credits for the CLG come from, as far as what I understand from a state act. One other thing clarifying, and I think this should relieve a lot of people who've had concerns, is about the CLG. We're only trying to create a CLG, which is the Certified Local Government, in order to be able to access state funds and federal funds. There's a 10% funding to CLG as sub-grants from the Federal Historic Preservation Fund. And there's an item in the Alabama Historical Commission Fact Sheet about Certified Local Government Programs. Simply, it says, "Through a public process, cities can opt to have more local control over development in locally designated historic districts." And again, reminding everyone, you're not going to be creating an ordinance tonight to create those districts, but just to try to get the CLG status. This is not a requirement of becoming a CLG, and I'm very relieved to read that, but it allows communities to stabilize historic districts and preserve community character, and I'm all for that. So again, thank you for allowing me to speak to that ordinance, to the proposal. And again, I would ask on Item 9, that there be a vote to change the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, guys, alright. So as far as the agenda being changed and voted on, we spoke with our legal counsel, and it's not necessary for us to vote on that ordinance.
I'm not asking you to vote.
Or to remove it. It's not necessary for us to remove it from the agenda. Yes, sir. Thank you, though. And that's from our legal counsel. Yes. Okay. Anybody else in the public that'd like to speak on Agenda Items 3 through 24?
Did you talk to Jack? Did you talk to Jack? Yes, Lord.
Dr. Young?
Yes, thank you.
How are you doing, sir?
Fine, thank you.
Good to see you.
I have been told that Item Number 5 may be removed for consideration tonight. And if it is, should I continue to speak or wait for some other time?
Well, you know, there was conversation. We have a small council here, and we thought that for record purposes, that we should have the full council for an ordinance of such sorts. So removed it will not be, but possibly tabled.
Yes.
Until we get a full dais. And that's just, you know, for the order. Yes, sir.
So I should go ahead and say what I want to say anymore?
You can, yes, sir, you have that right.
Well, I know all of you, and I'm glad to have the opportunity to speak on this topic. I've been a citizen of Ballin County for 35 years. I personally restored four historic buildings in Fairhope, and have oversown the restoration of another one in the city of Foley. And all of these buildings were extremely important to the character of the town. One of the ones that we did here, my wife and I did here, was the home of one of the Fairhopes founders. And without that work, the city would not be the same. There will be people that will tell you to take down a building, it's not worth it. But I can tell you, having spent the money to do it, it's worth it every time. The house that I previously mentioned on Summit Street, that house was collapsing from the inside in, but what was standing was the brick walls and the character of the building. And it was worth every penny to bring it back to life and add it to the city. What this ordinance is talking about doing is just establishing a commission, and gathering people together who know something about it. And I'm telling you right now, I'll volunteer to be on that committee, because I have done it. There are some places that may not be necessary to save a building, but having just been around the state of Alabama, and Tennessee, and Mississippi, I can tell you that we have the character in this community that bring people here. It's good for business, for people to see what the heritage of this town is. And if we don't take care of it, people from the outside will come here and tell us, just knock it down, we'll build back something better. And that's not necessary here. So I appreciate your time, I hope you will vote in favor of this ordinance, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Dr. Young. Alright, guys. Is there anybody else in the public that would like to speak on Agenda Items 3 through 24?
Hi.
Hello.
So my name is Mara Kozelski-Hunter, and I live in Fruit Nut District, and I'm on the Historic Preservation Committee. And I understand that you will be tabling, however...
We don't...
Or you might. Or you don't know yet.
We don't know.
That's news to me. We don't know.
What we'll do with it.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's just not a full dais up here, so that's a huge ordinance. But we'll see, we'll talk about it.
I took that from your communication with Dr. Young, so I apologize if I overinterpreted. So nevertheless, I prepared two pages of comments, and I thought, well, that's probably too long, so I would like to present just a few pieces, if I may, about the ordinance. So I will start with the reasons why to establish the ordinance, and save the rest for whenever we have the opportunity to revisit this again. So reasons why. Number one, preserve as possible the rapidly depleting historic stock in Fairhope. Number two, maintain a balanced cityscape. Fairhope is no longer a small town, but we have the opportunity to preserve some small-town charm as the city grows in new ways. Number three, historical tourism. Historical tourism is one of the reasons why people come to Fairhope, including the film industry that often visits here and works here. Historical tourism puts big money into local businesses. Number, I might have missed number. Number four, brick and mortar grants for a city historic property. Number five, greater grant support for religious institutions, residents, and business owners in how they access these grants, which are hard to get and complex to write. Number six, people do want some sort of historic program. We often hear that something needs to be done before Fairhope slips away. Number seven, our committee has worked through many of these powers that are invested in a commission that we could do through a committee like education and whatnot, and trying to help people with some of these grants, but what we learned is to do it successfully, we need the resources that grants can provide. And then, the last point to make is one we've been making all along, is that there are many ways to do historic preservation that respect individual property rights, and we are proposing a program that will incentivize people to preserve and support these volunteer efforts. So thank y'all so much.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Mara. Anyone else on Agenda Items 5 through 24? Okay, we'll close public participation. Council comments?
The arts alley dedication was great. Everybody who had a hand in the arts alley, really proud of that place. I think the mayor said it best when she said, "This might be, you know, the most Instagrammable place in the city now." I think there's a lot of truth to that, I think we have a lot of Instagrammable, is that a word?
It's a neologism, but go ahead.
Anyway, it was wonderful, I was proud to be a part of that. Just, you know, just congratulations to all the staff that worked on that, and all the artists, and, you know, there was a lot of people that deserve a lot of credit, and if I start trying to name them, I'll leave out about 30 people, but it was just a team effort, and it was great. Next, I want to address the non-Agenda Item Number 9. You know, we consulted, to the gentleman's concerns, we consulted with our council, and, you know, it was cleaner to have council president just remove it. I understand that you might want to vote to deny, but if you're not amending something, you don't take a vote, and if they, if you wanted us to go on record as having a vote, and say and say, put it up, a motion, and ask for a motion, I for one wouldn't even make the motion, so I don't even think it would make it to a vote.
It'd die on the vine. There's only three of us here, it'd die on the vine. So the numbers, yeah, sir.
So anyway, I appreciate that concern, and, you know, we've had, I was saying, Councilman Boone sometimes has said, you know, "I want to make a motion to get on record to vote something down," but it's just, it's a little messy when you do it that way. But there's no further record, if you weren't in a work session, though, there's no effort to put this vote off sometime in the future. Hopefully, as long as I'm on the council, I don't want to ever see it up for amending unless something unbeknownst to us now comes up, for all the reasons I stated in the work session. If you missed it, you can, please go back, and to save us a minute or so, go back and watch the video of the work session, please. As far as tabling the establishment of the Historic Preservation Commission, I think if you thought it might fail, but you thought it might otherwise pass with a full complement, you may want to table it, because you would have a two-to-one vote, and ordinance requires a majority of the council, so it would require unanimous vote, but I don't know, I don't know of anybody that would be, that's opposed to it. I thought we got it into the form that we were all happy with, so I don't see a reason to table it, other than the other two just wanting to vote. But if the three of us passed it, it passes. Unless there's someone, because if you know that there may be some others that wanted to vote no, and somebody up here wanted to vote no, then you're being gentlemanly and giving them an opportunity to vote. But I don't know that that's the case.
I don't know that that's an issue. I mean, maybe, I think I was just thinking in regards to Councilman Robinson's, the current liaison to the Historic Planning Commission. Chris Williams has been doing all the legwork back and forth lately on the legal side. Neither one of them are here. I guess it doesn't necessarily matter, they don't have to be here. We've all worked on it at some point or another, but that was my only logic.
Yeah, and I was, what you said was correct, it was just a gentlemanly type situation. There is no issues, it was more of a gentleman's type opportunity, but... It was more of a gentleman's type opportunity, but.
But I won't be here at the next council meeting, so you know.
So be it as it may.
You're gonna have a hard time getting everybody here.
Wait a minute now. Anyway.
I'd like to suggest to council president that we vote on it.
Okay. I don't have a problem with that. I do not have a problem with that. I was, yeah, don't have a problem with that.
Those are my comments.
Yeah. All right. Jimmy?
My only comments, you know, had a lot of great seniors up here a little bit ago, and just exciting time. I know Spanish Forks graduating tonight, Daphne tomorrow, Fairhope on Wednesday. Councilman Martin and I will both have seniors walking across the stage. And then I think you got St. Michael's Thursday, and I'm sure Bayside is in there somewhere. So just an exciting time, and I'd say congrats to all the upcoming graduates and the parents that helped get them over the finish line, the teachers, et cetera, et cetera. Takes a village, so congrats.
So, yeah, I, yes, I do have a senior graduating, so it's been some busy days here lately, running around with all these activities and appointments. And so, but congratulations. Jackson, good job. I'm proud of you. I'm glad you got in, son. You'll love Sanford University. It's a great opportunity for you. It's a Christian environment, so you'll have a great time there. Yeah, so once again, I'm gonna speak on, just to let everybody know about Agenda Item number nine. We removed it. We decided to remove it off of the agenda in the work session. We seeked legal counsel on how to do that. We just amended the agenda in the work session, so there will not be a vote on it. My decision to stir the pot on that was just to have conversation. And I don't think there's anything wrong with having conversation. You know, I had one already tell me I made a mistake, and I'll hold that. I made a mistake, and I can deal with that if they think that that's a mistake to have conversation. A mistake, I believe, is to not have conversation. And I think that that's why I'm here in this seat, is to bring up things that I see that need to be spoken about. And there's always a reason and a time and a place to ask questions and to speak about things, so we can see if we can make it better. If we never talk about it, we don't know if we can make it better. We assume that it's okay, but it may not be okay. So it was not to censor anyone. It was not to stop the public from having participation. But it was an ideological idea as far as to put it on the agenda for us to have a public conversation about the way that we do business and how it's organized. And I saw an opportunity to have that conversation, so I put it on the agenda. If I hurt someone's feelings, I apologize. But that's the way life is, brothers and sisters. Okay. Now, moving right along. Agenda Item number five is a final adoption and ordinance to establish a Historic Preservation Commission in the city of Fairhope, introduced at the April twenty-second, twenty-twenty-four City Council meeting.
On behalf of Councilman Jay Robinson, I want to make a motion for final adoption.
Jay, I hope you're in the bed watching this.
I'll go ahead and second that.
All right. Very good. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Thanks to everybody that worked on this, and thanks for all the commentary. And, you know, it's a fluid document. It's a work in, you know, progress, and I don't think it goes too far, and it'll have some benefits as well.
Yeah, this is, thank you, Councilman Burrell. This document, this is, this is a historic moment in itself. This is something that, over the years, people have been working to do to get it right. So if you think this came lightly, it didn't. It paid its dues. And just like us all, we have to pay our dues, and so did this ordinance if it passes. But a lot of people put a lot of sweat equity into this and a lot of thought process. Christopher Williams, who is our legal counsel, I have to give him credit as well. And the Historical Preservation Committee, I have to give them credit as well. Because what we did was, I believe, we created a document that was a win-win, and that's something that I believe in. If you have a win-win, then everybody wins. And I think we did that. So if there's no more further discussion.
I just have one or two things to say. And, you know, I worked on the, as the liaison for four years on the Historic Preservation Committee. I see Gary Gover standing up in the back. Gary, how many years have you been on the committee for that?
I think it's twenty-six.
Yep. I told you. I told you it paid its dues.
That tells you how long this has been in motion. So while I may have been thinking we ought to wait for Jay and for Chris to be here, at the end of the day, it's been in motion for twenty-six years. I don't know that delaying two more weeks is really valid. I won't even be here two weeks from now, so, you know, that'll be.
That's right.
It's gonna be hard to get everybody here, so.
All right.
Just wanted to say that. Thank you, Gary, and everyone else on the Historic Preservation Commission Committee for working towards creating the commission.
All right. I'm gonna ask the question. All in favor, say aye.
Hold it.
Roll call.
Oh, you calling it. I'm sorry, babe. My apologies.
Place one.
Aye.
Council President?
Aye.
Place three.
Aye.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. I asked for the question. You weren't fast enough. All right. Don't let me do your job. All right. All right. Agenda Item number six is another final adoption. All right. Very good. All right. Very good. Thank you, Dr. Young. All right. Yes, ma'am. All right. Agenda Item number six is another final adoption. It's an ordinance for the annexation of Tom Mitchell and Fairhope Single Tax Corporation property located at State Highway one eighty-one, Rockwell Place, Lot one, Common Area one, Common Area two, Rockwell Boulevard right-of-way, and Bushel Drive right-of-way, Fairhope, Alabama, introduced at the April twenty-second, twenty-four City Council meeting.
I'll make a motion for final adoption?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Sure does make it easy when they come in at R1, doesn't it?
Yeah. No doubt. Yeah. And Hunter, this is the one up by, this is on one eighty-one, right?
It is.
Rockwell, okay.
And just, this is the one we had in agreement, because there was some county, we got trapped in some jurisdictional things. So part of this is right-of-way. Councilman Burrell, the intention is to, that we'll follow up with the rezoning to requesting B2. So I don't want to concede that this was not.
You mentioned that last meeting.
Yeah. We talked about it. Yeah, okay. So they're coming in just to ease, and then they'll rezone.
They'll petition to rezone.
Petition to rezone. Yeah. Okay. All right. Very good. You'll make the question? Yeah, make the call.
Place one.
Aye.
Council President?
Aye.
Place three.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right. Motion carries. All right. Agenda Item number seven is, someone to introduce the ordinance?
I'll introduce the ordinance.
Thank you. Agenda Item number seven is an ordinance, an ordinance amending ordinance number fifteen oh four and an ordinance number sixteen thirty-two, authorizing and granting the second addendum to DirecTV LLC to Video Services Agreement.
Are we under any rush to pass this?
Okay. Yeah. 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 It could lay over. Yeah. All right, we'll allow that to lay over. All right. Agenda Item number eight, someone would like to introduce this ordinance, please.
I'll introduce the ordinance.
Okay. Agenda Item number eight is an ordinance repealing ordinance number fifteen ten, adopted April fourteenth, twenty fourteen, and adopting a new personnel handbook for the city of Fairhope. All right. And Hannah gave us a grand synopsis on what we were doing in the work session. I think we'll let this one lay over for a couple of weeks. All right. We removed Agenda Item number nine from the agenda. I'll strike that one. Agenda Item number ten is a resolution that the public improvement indicated herein for Laurel Brook Phase one and Phase two are hereby accepted for public maintenance subject to the bond posted and authorized as Mayor Sherry Sullivan to execute the maintenance and guarantee agreement between the city of Fairhope and D.R. Horton, Inc., Birmingham. Okay. This is just a maintenance agreement.
I'm making a motion. We approve the resolution?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. We didn't get to this one, Hunter. You want to?
This is just water.
Speak on it.
This was one of the last subjects we had, the extraterritorial jurisdictions. So it is only.
It's two years, correct?
Two years under the main.
That's right. Two years. All right. Very good. And no issues with that. Okay. All right. Any further discussion, gentlemen? All right. We have a motion and a second. Okay. All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. All right. Agenda Item number eleven is a resolution that the City Council authorizes and approves hiring an assistant water superintendent to allow current assistant water superintendent grade fourteen, who is retiring June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, to work together and train the new employee prior to retirement. This is beneficial to both the city and the new employee. The temporary position will expire upon the retirement of the current assistant water superintendent. Hannah spoke on this.
Move to authorize and approve the hiring of the assistant water superintendent?
Second.
Now, a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All in opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Agenda Item number twelve is a resolution that the City Council authorizes and approves the hiring and assistance of wastewater superintendent to allow the current assistant water superintendent, grade fourteen, who is retiring July thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, to work together and train the new employee prior to retirement. This is beneficial to both the city and the new employee. The temporary position will expire upon the retirement of the current assistant wastewater superintendent.
Move to authorize and approve the hiring of the assistant wastewater superintendent?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Congratulations to the retiree. All right. Very good. All right. Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Agenda Item number thirteen is a resolution that the Mayor Sherry Sullivan is hereby authorized to execute a contract with Krebs Engineering for repair and painting of the water tank and water treatment plant number three. We have RFQ with a not-to-exceed amount of fifty-five thousand dollars.
Just want to make clear that the actual resolution does state for professional engineering services for the repair and painting of the water tank.
It does. It's confused me, too.
Yeah, I think it just, it was inadvertently left out of the agenda, but the resolution has it correct. But I want to state that for the record, that it's the engineering services.
Yes. Yeah. It's in the notes. Yes, for sure.
So I'll make the motion to authorize the execution of the contract.
I have a motion and a second. All right. Any further discussion? All right. Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Agenda Item number fourteen is a resolution to award bid number twenty-four zero three five to Hemmifield Construction Company, Inc. for doghouse pump station rehabilitation with a bid proposal not to exceed one million, two hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars and zero cents.
Make a motion. Will you award the contractor, the bid to Hemmifield Construction?
A second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Just let the public know that one point one-three million of that's coming from grants.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. This is all grant money. That's correct. Hundred percent grant money. All right. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Resolution number, Agenda Item number fourteen, number fifteen, resolution authorizing Mayor Sherry Sullivan to inform and submit the municipal water pollution prevention program, MWPP, report for twenty twenty-three to the Department of Environmental Management. Darryl spoke on this. This is just house cleaning, compliance, QI.
Make a motion to authorize the mayor to submit the MWPP report for twenty twenty-three?
A second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. All right. Agenda Item number sixteen is a resolution. The Mayor Sherry Sullivan is hereby authorized to execute change order number one for bid number zero three six two two, pump station and forced main maintenance, phase two, with a cost of one hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars to award change order number one to Aid Long Boring, Inc. The new contract total will be four million, eight hundred and sixty-four thousand, six hundred and eighty dollars and zero cents.
We authorize the mayor to execute the change order?
A second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? This is a forced main that is going to go out by our new pump station to consider or carry the growth that we have out in that node of one eighty-one. So this is a vital piece of work that we're doing here. So thank you, council, for, all right. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, say nay. Motion carries. All right. Agenda Item number seventeen is a resolution, is a resolution to reject all bid numbers twenty-four zero four zero for wastewater treatment plant screening equipment and authorize the rebid of this purchase under Code of Alabama nineteen seventy-five, section forty-one sixteen fifty-seven.
Make a motion. Will you reject all bids?
Second.
All right. Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Agenda item. Where am I?
Eighteen.
I'm on eighteen? Agenda item number eighteen. I'm sorry, I can't read my own thing. Agenda item number eighteen is a resolution that the City Council authorizes acceptance of two ADECA engineering efficient retrofrit grants, twenty-one thousand, five hundred dollars to replace the multiple lighting structures at the city's wastewater treatment plant with energy-efficient LED lighting, twenty-five thousand dollars to replace the lighting thermostat insulation in the Future Flying Creek Nature Center, and authorize Mayor Sherry Sullivan to sign all necessary documents. Ms. Love spoke on this. This is all grant money. And there is no match to these, by the way.
Make a motion. Will you accept the two grants?
A second.
All right. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right. Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right. Motion carries. Agenda item number nineteen is a resolution to award bid number twenty-four zero three six, twenty twenty-four to Mad Dash, Inc., DBA Southern Steel Structures for metal building sixty-by-fifty-six stepped foundation, two-bay mechanic shop expansion for city of Fairhope Public Works with a bid proposal not to exceed two hundred and seventy-seven thousand, eight hundred and two dollars and zero cents.
Move to award the bid?
A second.
Yeah. All right. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? I think we got a good deal on this one.
Yeah. And we got three bids on it.
Yeah, we did. Yeah.
Getting better.
Getting much better. Yeah. Ms. Wolf and that team is doing a much better job, since we brought it up, I must say. All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. All right. Agenda item number twenty is a resolution to award bid number twenty-four zero three nine, twenty twenty-four to Roof Doctors of Alabama for a Pecan Building Warehouse roof replacement with a total bid proposal not to exceed two hundred and eleven thousand dollars, two hundred and eleven thousand, five hundred and sixty-four dollars and seventy-five cents.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Ten bids on that.
Yeah, ten, yeah. I counted it. That's the one that I was impressed by. Ten bids. I looked at it, and they all were legit bids, too. All right. So I have a motion and a second. Hearing no further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. All right. Agenda item number twenty-one is a resolution to award bid number twenty-four zero two eight, twenty twenty-three. to award bid number 24028, 2023, to L&amp;K Construction LLC for Flying Creek Nature Preserve, pedestrian tunnel construction of a concrete box culvert under Veterans Drive with a bid proposal not to exceed $651,623.65. Wow.
So moved.
All right.
Second.
All right. I got a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
This seems like, uh, you know, something small. Not, not that the number's small, but this is a big deal.
This, I'm waiting.
We've waited on this a long time.
Yeah. This is exciting.
Can we have a ribbon cutting at the tunnel?
Yeah.
We were trying to figure out how to do the ground breaking out, but it hurt our gut. We're worried about parking. Mr. John thinks that we'd be around shuttle, just to fall there.
Yeah, but.
And there's no water gonna be gushing through here, right? All right.
Yeah. I'm putting my swimsuit on.
Keep Jimmy from streaking through there before they open it, because he lives close to it.
Jesus. Telling all your secrets, Jimmy. Oh, God. But this is a big deal, Councilman Burrell. I was, I am so excited about this. Um, I was telling my daughter about this. This is huge. So, all right. So, hearing no further discussion on this exciting time of the city moving forward. Um, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. All right. Agenda item number 22 is a resolution to award bid number 24029 to SC Stagner LLC for Flying Creek Nature Preserve Park Project Construction of a passive recreational nature park associated with amenities with bid proposal not to exceed $1,950,000. All right.
Make a motion. We approve the awarding of the bid to Stagner, SC Stagner LLC.
A second.
I have a motion and a second. Now, we'll have to add a little money to this one. I will. We, it's, yeah, about $950,000 to, just for public notice.
Also, the council, they were continuing to look for grant lines.
Yes, I saw that. Yeah, so.
Another big deal.
Yeah. Huge. Huge. Excited. Yeah.
Just out of curiosity, does anybody, do we have any projects that SC Stagner has done that we can kind of see?
Richard, he's asking, have you seen their work?
They've done the first pickleball for it. I've worked with them and I've worked with them in some other, uh, in other locations. So, yeah, they, they're capable.
Okay. Oh, I'm, I'm good with it. I'm just curious what they've done.
Yeah, well, they got the bid, so, God bless you. They must have filled, checked all the boxes. Yeah. So, that's exciting, interesting. Glad we're moving. All right. All right. No further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say nay. All right. Motion carries. Agenda item number 23 is a resolution that the city council approved the select, the selection by Mayor Sherri Sullivan for professional consulting services for an RFQ, go-between support for the City of Fairhope and Tyler Technologies and other supporting applications to Global Solutions and Data Services LLC, and authorize Mayor Sherri Sullivan to negotiate the not to exceed fee to be approved by the council.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? And that fee will be under the price of what we usually pay, uh, an employee, for sure.
It'll come back to us anyway, right?
Yeah. So, all right. Very good. And no further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. All right. Agenda item number 24 is a resolution that the City of Fairhope approves the procurement of a camera system upgrade and a three-body camera that are on Sourcewell with Motorola solutions, and therefore does not have to be let out to bid the total purchase amount not to exceed $123,893, and to approve the transfer for budget funds from the capital purchases fiscal year 23 carryover for equipment install of $91,892,000, and a capital improvement funds replacement of ceiling tiles in the PD of $35,000, total $126,892, to capital purchasing equipment and vehicles.
So moved.
All right. Chief had a lot going on right there.
Yep.
Good Lord. Peter and Paul. All right, guys. All right. Any further discussion? I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right. Very good. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. All right. Agenda item number 25 is public participation. You have a max of three minutes to speak on anything for the good of the order. Hello, lovely lady.
My name is Ann Brant, 103 Riley Circle, here in Fairhope.
Hey, Ms. Brant.
As always, I'd like to thank each of you for all the time and dedication that you put into helping Fairhope be, be Fairhope. And I really appreciated hearing that, um, number nine was put on the agenda list to have conversation.
Yes, ma'am.
Communication seems to be the biggest thing I keep looking for when I'm trying to figure out what's going on in town. And I'm wondering if there has ever been, um, any conversation about, I guess, having one focal point, and it's probably with, um, data entry kind of things, where the city can say, we're going to do such and such. Do you have a comment to make? Versus, you know, trying to hold a big public meeting to get people together. It would allow people to voice their comments. Um, it would hopefully allow other people to read what those comments are, because maybe they would agree and say, oh, yes, I agree with such and such. But, um, I just wanted to stand up here and just suggest that we figure out some kind of way to make for better communication. The end.
Okay. Thank you. Um, I, you know, we've always, um, you know, when I first got on council, that's something that I, that we've, and it's not just Fairhope. It's, it's, it's the nation as far as communication and getting communication out to the public, because you have so vast differences in ages and the way people receive communication technology versus other opportunities, mail, um, social media. Um, so, um, but it's something that I know the mayor and our team is constantly working on, Ms. Brantley. So, um, but thank you for your comments. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. I'm sorry? Did you get my phone message today? Did you email? Um, I'll check. I love your phone message. Thank you. Thank you.
Very good. Anybody else for public participation on anything? You have three minutes.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Yes.
Did we introduce the ordinance and the, the DirecTV?
Yes, we did.
Just wanted to make sure on, uh.
We didn't introduce any, ask if it was timely, if we had to vote on it or not.
I asked for them.
Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you, though.
Marcus. I'll move to adjourn.
Second.
I have a, a motion to adjourn and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion, meeting adjourned.